Scott Taddy?
What, Scott Taddy?
Oh, I'm miserable, dude. I was asleep like thirty minutes ago.
Oh, man.
Tell you begin to have sunburn.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay outside a little bit and see all the people.
I like to hide my time like all the other. But I have to sit there and take it in the quiet.
Oh, we're not, yeah. I'm all about that. Hey, just mark them off. I'll call it.
We got the update. We don't need that. Virgil, dude.
No, no.
It had the truth, yeah. I'm just saying, we had it right here. Read it at your leisure.
I just figured out what else, too. I know you were talking about the.
Oh, you wrapped up?
What do multiple pieces?
We can do that, too.
You know, what makes me mad is those y'all need to be the teachers. That makes me mad, but it makes me mad. I'm all right.
Well, suck them by.
It's a really tricky. In the brush. It's okay. It'll be all right.
Oh, we got one minute. Everybody ready?
No, there's no pin chitters denied.
It's your.
Well.
Hey, you ever look at that?
That was all ready for us, so.
So I knew it was either him or.
Yeah, so sometimes it comes up too fast and I'm like, who gives matter?
Tomorrow morning.
I tell them if they can sell our list, that we can have one less.
Oh, lady got. There's Evelyn.
Evelyn.
Everybody ready? All right. I call this regular session of the Lovington City Commission to Order. Shannon, a roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Tejada.
Here.
Bow, bow your heads and pray with me. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day. Lord God, we thank you for the, the fall in our community. We thank you for everything that we have, because you are the one that has given it to us. Lord God, we pray that this city would bring glory to your name. We pray that we make decisions tonight based on what you would have us to do and go in a direction that would be blessing to our citizens and a great glory to your name. Lord God, we again, we thank we, thank you. We give you all the praise and all the glory. In Jesus' cross and name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Joining us in the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the sea of symbol, a perfect friendship among united cultures.
May be seated.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a sale of property north, uh, on north of three oh nine East Gum Street, Elsman Pool. I shall move that, please second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
And I just want to make one comment on that. And I know Robert and I know Crystal had added it to the agenda, uh, but the individuals had been sitting in the corner over there looking. He just had interest in the property. Lives right next to it. And he, you know, he, he, you know, he just was just seeing if the property was available for sale, and so he was gonna be willing to purchase it and not want to something else. But, uh, he, he came to the meeting and I, uh, wanted to express his, uh, his, his favor, so he had, uh, Crystal put it on the agenda. And that's a real, real reason why it's there. And like I said, he was here, uh, but, uh, if you guess.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Shannon.
Commissioner Tejada.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion in a second for the adoption of minutes. Any further discussion? additions or corrections? Hearing none. Shannon?
Commissioner White.
White.
Yes. Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Tejada?
Yes.
Commissioner Boe?
Yes.
All right. Spring's there. Commissioner, on.
Yes, I do actually today want to announce, uh, we've got two of our, um, two of our new hires here.
All right.
Um, Edwin Borosol. He actually started today. He's actually filling the last open spot for the law utility department. Started today. And then we've got Laura Ontiveros, who's filling and replacing our front desk coordinator position. She's actually got extensive experience with human resources and purchasing finance type things, so she's gonna be an overall asset department as well. So I wanted to everybody to go ahead and thank Robert for letting me borrow your shirt for today.
He can probably keep it now.
It's mine now, so.
Well, thank you. And welcome to the new hires. Is that it?
Calls for service. Hundred forty-two citations with forty arrests. The Lexapro Policy and Procedures, uh, approval part has been completed. We're moving on to the next approval process and then implementing the training of our staff. Our under guard just played colors at the Walke, uh, football game the other night. And October third, community outreach at options on Dowmont Street. And on September enterprise vehicles from Albuquerque, uh, enterprise vehicles. So they'll be picked up and they'll be ready to go out on the street. Uh, we have two uncertified that's in the process. They get hired and just do it. And they're giving everybody hot dogs except for billionaires. Cause everything went off safe. And that's all.
There you go. All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Fire chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of commission. So work on the station is, is progressing. They're painting inside the building, the offices, the hallways and stuff. They have finished painting the truck haul, but now tomorrow they're supposed to start the concrete work and the epoxy work in the truck haul. That's probably gonna take a couple of weeks on that part of the work. So be in Rejuables, be in town, so. One thing I did wanna speak on was, we had a vehicle accident last Monday on three eighty. And it was an elderly couple. They were from Capitan, I believe. We ended up after, um, she had no family in the area. We asked sheriffs, state cops, anybody if they could help her get to Lovick. Everybody, of course, said no. So we brought her to Lovington and one of my firefighters off duty in his own vehicle took her to Lovick. So I just wanted to thank, uh, Isaiah Horus, because he's gonna have to do that. And that's, that's the kind of people that I have a working for. So the numbers for August are total EMS was two hundred and seventy-eight, uh, inter facility transfers, forty-six, refusal canceled DOA, seventy-four, airport transfers was thirteen, table calls fifteen, and twenty-two fire calls. So other than that, I will stop any questions.
Commissioner Boe?
Thank you, sir. Happy to say welcome to, uh, city commissioners, staff, and people of the audience. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. It's very nice that you take time out of your busy schedules to come and be a part of the community, uh, be here and, uh, talk about things. If that discussion, if there's anything that needs to be brought up, by all means, bring it up and, uh, let's get things out in the open and talk about things. That's the way we can move forward. Uh, went to the park this past week and, and, uh, went and looked at the new, uh, structure that's being put up in the park. And, uh, it's coming along nice. Looks very nice. There were a couple of people out there, uh, talked with a gentleman and he said the park is the best, that it's a, it's a beautiful structure, but it'll never stay good because, uh, the people around here don't appreciate the things that they have. And I told him, I said, well, you know, let's see that they do appreciate the things that we have, because we can't say that we haven't put new things out, given things back to the community. So, uh, maybe we just have to do a little more, uh, security, keeping an eye on it, uh, making sure. I said, and that, that just doesn't go with the shelter. It goes with a lot of other things that we have. I know we're trying to improve things and give nice things to the community, so I hope that parents at home see that, too, and, uh, instill it in their children, and let's take care of what we have in our community. We can have some nice things. And also I wanna say, uh, shop local, buy local, eat local, uh, go to a movie local. We have a nice movie theater here. Go to a movie, cause whatever we do to the community, uh, that we help out, going to a movie, going out to eat, uh, we're helping out that business, but we're also helping our community. And it's important that we do. And we gotta take care of each other, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Commissioner Trigg? Yeah, just, uh, one, one comment. I, you know, I know we, there's a lot of stuff on the agenda that we agree and not agree on, but one thing I, I have to say that I have never, there's a lot of things that disagree and agree when public comment comes up or somebody wants to put something on the agenda. I always like to hear the public's opinion voice. I never like to remove it off the agenda. I may disagree or agree with them, but there, we're here as commissioners to have their voice heard. And when we remove something that we just don't like and not hear from the public, uh, then we're not representing the public. So I would, uh, say that earlier, I think if, you know, I, I, Robert already made his, his point of not selling that piece of property, which, uh, last time I did ask him here in an open meeting, cause I was in favor of selling it, he, he turned around and said, you know, I need it. And so we all agreed that he needed it. But we had a citizen requesting to purchase it. You know, we didn't know if we were gonna change our mind, or Robert could've changed his mind at this point, but the whole point is that, you know, we're here to represent the public and the public is, comes to these meetings to be heard. And we, if we take that away from them, then, uh, their voice is no longer, their voice is now silenced. So, uh, I just wanna make that comment off, off the removal of the sale of the property of East Gum Street. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
That being said, I checked on the property before I removed it, and they did a lot of work, too. Got it all cleaned up, got shelves put in, moved all their big stuff out there that needed room for, and so it's a utilized area now. So we all thought it was okay for them to take it over after the last meeting, so. That probably should've been done before it was put on the agenda. Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Dandy?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Mr. Piero, how are you this evening?
Well, Mayor, and yourself?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
Good. This is Mayor Council. We continue to work on the accounting records, trying to bring everything together. I have the bank, I have the bank account, the full cash account reconciled through the end of June. Now the issue is just trying to make sure all the funds have their proper cash amounts allocated. I have met with the police department because some of their grants that were reported in the general ledger were not done correctly. And so we had to go back and fix that. Working with Michael Steininger, um, it looks like we're gonna have to do a little amendment to the DFA report because of the, of the, um, fire and the police grants weren't reported quite correctly on the DFA report. But once I get past this hurdle, then we start going shit code quickly, um, for July, August, and September. So we're working on that. We've had some, um, personnel issues that we've had to deal with. Sometimes when there's changes, um, in upper management, um, people seem to, they're used to doing certain way, um, certain things in a certain way. And, um, when we see things that are lacking or need improvement, and we sometimes get pushed back. And, um, so we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, trying to, so they need to understand that. And they're working with me now at this point to kind of try to get that done.
All right. Thank you, sir. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, members of the public. Some of us went to the municipal league conference in Riedoso last week. There was also the city managers annual conference. A lot of good stuff. I left a packet from the municipal league, um, at your desks there. Kind of a recap, a lot of good stuff on GRTs, water trust board funding, uh, a lot of issues affecting municipalities we've had. And the city manager and the mayor, just, and my heart went out to them because they, they kept this conference there. A lot of people from all over the state, and they represented well, so I thought it was a pretty good conference. Just a reminder to the commissioners, tomorrow in Hobbs at the core. I believe it's the first time the entire legislative finance committee, uh, from the legislature will be there. So it starts at eight thirty at the core. It goes through five o'clock. It's, there's also an agenda for Wednesday and Thursday. I can give that to you, but the mayor of Hobbs will be there, uh, city manager, and a lot of people from the LFC in case, and no registration required. All you have to do is show up. The GRT number for July came in at one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. This marks the fourth month in a row with a GRT number over one million dollars. That's never happened before in our history. Once again, construction and retail combined accounted for over thirty-eight percent of our GRT. And one thing that came up in the EDC meeting that the mayor was at, um, I just wanna state that the GRT number that I report every month is the net GRT number that goes into the city's bank account. Sometimes I throw, I show charts and graphs, historical comparisons. So the number I report is after, basically the gross number is higher than the number that I report, so I try to be as conservative as possible when reporting these numbers. Present to the commission on a periodic basis, just to kind of bring you up to date. I know you see Robert and Chiefs every, every two weeks, but, uh, today I, I wanna play a short video, but after that I'll close out by asking Laura Brock from Animal Protection Services to come up and give the commission a little update on what's been happening down there. So, um, but first, if you'll indulge me, I was contacted by the ICMA last week. ICMA is the International City Managers Association. It's the largest city managers association in the world. They're having their annual convention in Tampa at the end of October. I'm not attending, but they reached out because every year, uh, they make twenty videos of various towns and cities. And they highlight, it, it can kind of be fine tuned to the way the city wants to focus on. It could talk about collaboration with neighboring organizations and government entities. It can talk about economic development. It can talk about revitalization, community growth, infrastructure, community health initiatives, affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to give you, I sent an email out last week with five links. One was from Gallup, one was from Los Lunas, and one was from Sunland Park. Like I said, they only make it twenty-eight year. They have eighteen cities signed up already. Again, this will be played at their annual convention at the end of October in Tampa, Florida. I looked at it, I looked at the one from Gallup and it was more tourist focused. I looked at the one at, from Los Lunas, which will play now, uh, and it was more kind of economic development focused. So it, it's not cheap, um, but the, the thing about this, not only will they be housed on the ICMA website forever, they become property of the city. They bring a team in here for one day for about twelve hours. They'll interview the mayor, uh, probably head of the EDC, possibly the city manager, various department heads, maybe some commissioners. And you'll see from the video that they, they kind of, we kind of lead them to the focus we want. They'll make a five-minute video, a one-minute version. We can then, it becomes our property. We get the two hours of unedited video and we can edit it however we want. And it becomes our permanent, uh, kind of tool for marketing the city that we can have on the city website. So Kevin, we're gonna play the one from Los Lunas right now. It's about five minutes.
Let me make sure this is. The long, the zip on this.
Population of around two thousand. I wish it was like, two, two more politicians. It's estimated right now to be around eighteen, nineteen thousand. Growing up, I remember when they put the first light up at the intersection of Main Street and Highway three fourteen. It's growing, but it's.
Los Lunas is the second fastest farming country in New Mexico. We have changed significantly from a pretty sleepy agricultural town in the early nineteen hundreds to a major workforce employment center for Valencia County as well as throughout the region up to the South Valley of Albuquerque and all the way down to.
We need to make sure that we have a stable community that is vibrant, prosperous, and allows for people to reemploy our community.
Quality of life means different things to different people, and it can mean here anything from infrastructure improvements that we need to make to plan for the future, as well as specific efforts to improve our recreational opportunities, our cultural opportunities.
The most, the largest priority we have to prove infrastructure is creating the new I twenty-five border, Los Lunas Bowl, which is a new intersection on Highway three fourteen and a river crossing connecting to New Mexico Highway forty-seven, which is on the, on the side of the.
We have a lot of properties where our local roads don't connect to each other, and so over the years, uh, community development and public works have worked to find ways that residents can certainly enhance the community without overloading our main roads and causing traffic congestion.
One of the priorities for the library and the museum is to ensure that the cultural history isn't lost while Los Lunas is experiencing this growth. We're uploading some of the photographs and documents that area residency has here for several years, and we're able to create this archive, a digital archive.
Before we had any other major stores, men, well, most of the, the business we have were all small businesses, owned by local people who are very committed to our community. It's important we have small business to have a local connection.
We're fortunate at Los Lunas to have a couple of major corporations recently relocated here, and most of them is one being Meta, uh, which is under construction for Los Lunas' data center for Facebook, as well as Amazon, which is recently constructed for filming center, uh, which will be operational in twenty-four.
We created STEM lab with their help, and so we're teaching robotics, we're teaching programming, video editing, the kids can play drones, we're doing a little bit of everything that involves STEM or STEAM activities.
The village of Los Lunas has sent in incredible partners from beginning to end, but that's wondering, looking at collaboration around infrastructure, water, wastewater, light segmentation, uh, and more. The team in Los Lunas go above and beyond. And we're really lucky to have great community partners.
Los Lunas is very blessed to have, uh, a large amount of open space and recreational opportunities right here within the community.
We have the Laskowski Preserve and the El Cero de los Ceros Preserve, which we train both of those, uh, preserves encompasses about twenty-six hundred acres of, uh, recreational space. We have eighteen parks. We got another couple of parks that are on the way, and we're also investing in the parks that we do now and trying to update them. Well, of course, the challenge is we're always trying to find that balance of being able to preserve those areas, but also being able to open them up for, you know, the public to use. It's not good to have a preserve, but you can't do nothing with it. But we also can't overrecreate these areas, you know? You don't want all that, you know, too much damage or too much stuff going on in those areas, and then you end up destroying the beautiful future that you have out there.
We consider ourselves a village because we are very open to, to contact with the residents for our community. We have several project goals at the village, which is two separate priorities, which are all over the public and all take public input.
One of the ways that our residents can help the village in Los Lunas is participating in our programs, but as well as participating in our surveys and just showing up for our events. Uh, that's one of the most important things. Um, if we know that we're giving them what they need and what they would like to be entertained with, um, where it, uh, creates a family environment for them as well as their children, their grand, their grandparents, everyone, um, we feel that we've succeeded.
Los Lunas certainly has a very exciting and bright future there. Our opportunities for us to grow and develop responsibly, sustainably, and for us to be a driving force in the economy, not just for Valencia County, but for the state of New Mexico as well.
It's important for me that, that we hopefully keep our youth in our community. New Mexico was lost a lot of its population, uh, between the ages of eighteen and forty to those states, which created, I think, uh, already partially a great, and then became our best of rights.
Thanks, Kevin. So as you can see, it's, it's really professionally produced. As I said, there's a five-minute video like that, then there's a one-minute really condensed version, and then we would get all the hours of unedited video. They send a film crew in and they get it done in one day. They use a drone. It's not cheap, uh, but I'm looking to the commission's guidance on this, um, because obviously this is gonna be done by the end of October. There's two slots left. They need an answer by tomorrow. I only found out about this last week, otherwise I would've put it on as a discussion item. The cost is twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. But as I said, it becomes property of the city forever, and we can use that to market it and, you know, at some point maybe it will become sale. But as you can see, it's, it's the ICMA TV, and they do twenty-year, it will be played at their convention. So just looking for your thoughts.
Didn't we do this once before?
Yeah.
Was it with these guys or?
No, no, uh, it was with the county. We did it with the county years back.
With the county?
We did one with the county and then one with ourselves, yeah.
Separately, I thought?
Yeah. We did, yeah, a smaller one with ourselves, and then the first one was with the county. That would change. County economic development.
My question is, uh, you're guaranteed a slot for this year if you respond tomorrow?
Yes, sir. They were very impressed. They seemed to know a lot of what was going on. They referenced the park structures, they referenced the Main Street project, um, fixing finances. They referenced the Main Street project, fixing finances, all the positive. They knew a lot about, I mean, maybe they're just good marketers, but they knew a lot about the positive developments in Lovington when they reached out to me last week. And if they could just, you know, be pitching me, but they, it seemed like they did their homework, and they said they were very interested.
Well, we had, we definitely have a new face compared to what we had before COVID, that's for sure. New Main Street, new groceries and everything.
Now, it had been suggested that we could possibly use LIDA funds if we put an economic development slant on others. Or lodgers, if we have the money, but.
We don't have time to use LIDA funds. I mean, when do you have to pay?
I don't know when we have to pay.
But I thought, yeah, I wouldn't want to touch.
Do you have to turn a profit? LIDA funds have to turn a profit.
You can't lose LIDA for marketing? You can't use it for.
For economic development?
The guy next to you ought to say, if he says no, then it's no.
He's the one that said lodgers tax would be your best bet to use.
Lodger's tax, yeah.
We have to turn a profit.
You have to create jobs.
Yeah.
Okay, you have to be a drop job, yeah. That was one of my questions, if it was, if you'd like to.
About 100,000 total.
What was our average last year on lodgers?
Last year, it only showed.
Or what is our last quarter going to indicate?
Last year only showed revenues of 100,000. And I think we have a balance of about 90 and a half, but it's, some of it's spoken for.
Well, yes, that's our, we should have a good balance tonight because we're improving the second quarter.
I think there's money in the lodger's tax to pay for.
You can't tell us the balance of lodgers tonight. We're going to improve second quarter.
No, I, I know.
No, no, you're allocating next. If we're, we're going to be able, long-term is what you, what, what they're at. The question is, long-term, can we afford 26,000? You know, that's.
That's what I'm asking, what's the balance?
Because we allocate funding for Chamber, EDC, and, and Main Street. So, you know, long-term, is it feasible? And so that is really the question, because at the end of the year, we got them three taff. We got a patron.
Yeah. So the question was proposed, you don't know the balance of the lodger's tax. And my response to that, due to the accounting records, the best I can tell is that, I believe, I, we had a lodger's tax meeting, and the balance I gave was about 86,000 or so as of the end of June.
It was 60,000 after everything was taken out of it.
Yeah, 60.
So 60 is not obligated or?
And what are you asking for tonight?
26,300.
Actually, 60 minus 26?
Okay, I don't think at this late a day, we can obligate either lodgers.
Right.
Or, we definitely can't do LIDA, but I'm, anyway, I don't think. The, the question is, are we going, should we tip you to go ahead? We'll figure it out later.
Basically, the commission feels like it's a worthwhile investment for the city as a marketing tool to attract economic development, maybe tourism, or not.
I believe Lovington has to invest in itself.
And market it, continue to.
To move forward.
Yeah. I know we can, we still have, we need to market Lovington, and we definitely need, we need to show the new face, the current new face that we, we have, I mean.
I'd say just spend 26,000, get it done, pull it out of the general fund, and if we can figure something out later, we'll worry about it later. But that's, that's just me, because you have a short window of opportunity here. We could spend half the night. I don't feel good, so I don't argue about it much longer, so.
I mean, I can, I can play the Gallup videos, more so than the tourism and tribal, the history and the ethnicities that are up in the four corners. So it's just, it's how, what the commission feels about this. It's worthwhile. I think it's well done. I think it's slightly edited, you know, it's inspirational. But I did send an email to all of you. It's got five links on there for different cities. Three in Mexico, and I think one in Texas and one somewhere.
And we have to invest in ourselves, so.
Yeah, we're definitely pushing this big housing development here. That's the pitch, you know? Because we don't have no pitches right now, and we don't have no houses being built. Very little houses being built. So we're going to have to advertise. So I feel that, I'm in favor of what Commissioner Gandy said, let just pull it from the general, and if we, let's just go.
Do, I don't think that you actually need our permission.
No, I, I, no, I don't, but I want you to be okay with it. Yes, I just, I mean, it's, it's not.
As a, you're asking for a favorable opinion. I have no problem with it. But if you do it, I would just say, as Commissioner Gandy said, let's not worry about where we're going to pull it from. If you're going to do it.
Right.
I would, you're going to have to talk to a gentleman, knowing you're right, and it's going to have to have a budget adjustment for it, whatever. Put it under the appropriate category, and we'll approve it whenever he brings us a budget adjustment the next month, so.
Okay.
So that's my opinion.
The latest date for filming would be October 10th, but we can basically name our day that we want them to fly in and do it.
The latest date? So it's going to happen like in the next few days?
Two, two weeks. Because it's going to be ready for the ICMA convention in Florida, the national convention, which is October 29th. And we'd be one of 20 municipalities, and they would play it many times at that convention. It would be on the website.
Try to get some available dates, because.
Yes, sir, I'll coordinate with the department heads, commissioners, the mayor, EDC, I hope. And maybe Chamber, Main Street, we'll see, we'll see if they want. But I appreciate the input.
You can put it together then.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Lastly, I'd just like to hear from Laura Vonn. She's going to give us some updates from APS.
Good evening, Laura Vonn, Animal Protection Services Director. Hello, mayor, commissioners, and the public. I wanted to come and give you all a little update on what we have been doing. Our facility is then providing basic care, limited veterinary services to support our animal shelters and also the community needs. We are not equipped or staffed like a private veterinary clinic. However, our services focus on vaccines, spay and neuter surgeries, basic wellness like deworming, flea and tick prevention, minor skin issues, a send-off of reference lab work. An example of that would be blood work. If you want blood work done prior to surgery, we can actually do that. It takes about a week turnaround time, so you have to do it a week prior to your animal going into surgery. We do offer that now. The vet can do minor biopsy and cytology, which are slides that can be sent in, and she can also, we can also provide that, and it is a send-out service because it's too expensive to do in-house. We can do basic dental procedures and dental cleanings, extensive dental care. It is referred out to another facility. Our limitations on our, like x-rays and specialty labs, we cannot do that. That would be serviced out to another veterinary service. We're not equipped for emergency 24-hour care, and we do not provide full-service care such as dentistry, orthopedic surgery, chronic illness management, things of that nature. Our focus remains on population management and shelter animal health while bringing basic wellness availability to the community, which has not been since Dr. Vern Back retired. Some of our updates, we have been awarded two grants. One Leslie will tell you about later tonight, but one from Carol Petrie Foundation. And it basically focuses on the reclaim, helping out with reclaim, emergency medical transport. For transport, we have to get heartworm tests sometimes for our animals to be able to leave and get a negative test, health certificates. Sometimes we can't do it in-house, we have to do out-house for certain reasons. It also covers gas expenses, such as going to Santa Fe or other cities that we may be transporting animals to and to and from the airport. We're doing a lot of our transports, once a month we do flights. Some of our funding for the New Mexico Board of Veterinary Medicine is the one that you're going to be approving tonight. That funding specifically supports spay and neuter and transport of 350 animals from Tatum and Lovington. I did partner with Tatum, so Lee County has a problem as a whole, and animals from Tatum also come into our Lovington shelter. So we're kind of broadening and trying to help out other communities, so it also helps us in the long run. So that grant was specifically for 350 animals, and it also helped with some transportation needs, and we're working out those programs right now. So say if you qualify, you do have to qualify for this program and be in that very low income and have to prove that. But say if you're an elderly patient and you can't get out, but you have animals that need fixed, we want to remove those barriers. And if that means, you know, getting a transport driver to come to your house, pick that animal up and deliver it back to you, we want to remove those barriers so we can cut down the animal population. That is our end goal. That is the state's end goal, is to, you know, really taming this animal overpopulation problem. So our service breakdown for that is, we're hoping in the communities, we can do 200 feral cats and 800, sorry, 80 own dogs and 70 own cats. And that's between the two communities. I wanted to give you an update on our killing kennel building project. We're having two kennel buildings with in-out kennels that are being built as we speak, and we're hoping to get those delivered, hopefully sometime in February. We'll be going out for RFP, hopefully in the near future. And Jow was awarded money from the county for a voucher program to spay and neuter animals also. Once again, Jow is in Lee County, and it becomes a Lee County issue, which then also becomes, and Lovington also gets a lot of that runoff of animals and people asking for help. So I will be meeting with the city over there on the 30th of this month to put together that voucher program and what it looks like. They're already starting to make appointments, but we're getting that worked out so we can also hit the overpopulation problem and hopefully remove some barriers also there. Our programs are benefiting everybody. The animal population control is what we're definitely targeting to reduce the intake and stray overpopulation through that expanded spay and neuter programs. Regional collaboration partnerships with Jow, Tatum, and Lovington, they broaden the service impact. Facility, we're new kennels and building increasing capacity, improving housing standards. And our grant utilization is external funding reduces burden on the local resources and taxpayers. So in conclusion, the Animal Protection Services Division continues to prove animal welfare outcomes and community services. November 10th, Dr. Tracy Phillips, who is our consulting vet and been doing our clinic on Wednesdays, she will be here for an introduction and to meet you all. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? I just want to say you're doing a good job, and we appreciate it. I appreciate you coming forward, you know, when I visited you the last time. I didn't realize we were doing all of these services for our community, and that's great. In addition to our spay and neuter programs, that's great. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Lastly, I would just like to thank the fire chief for sharing that story about your old DMT firefighter. You know, we're all in the public service business, and it sounds corny to say it, but I truly believe that our people in the city are our greatest assets who work for the city. So, thank you. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions?
Just one question, Dave. On, on your next report, can you put, on the construction side of the pie, can you put the figure right there so we can know? What, what concerns me is next year, I mean, just rumors flying around that oil and gas will be below 50, high 40s. I just want to see, most likely, if that is the case, no one's going to invest in Lovington, so there might not be no construction, no housing, no construction. And if we took the construction away from the pie, how much are we left with? And a little bit of, to, to know where that figures out. Because if we take, like you mentioned, 30, 30% or 38, 38%, I mean, you're, you're looking at 700 and something, and we're budgeting 800, 860,000 per month, and it probably is right at the 800 mark. And I'm just, just something to think about for next year.
Definitely getting spoiled by those million-dollar plus 13 members.
I just don't want us to keep thinking that's going to be the figure every model. Yeah, I've seen it. Seen it go, go disappear overnight.
Other questions?
No. Just breathing heavy, sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, Commissioner Ball, I was going to also state that you should add either build or build and remodel here also to your.
Construct local.
Or construct local, yes.
I can do that.
All right. Since it's become an important part, and obviously we may, may or may not need.
Well, at least the eat and shop and buy all goes work.
It works, so, yeah, exactly, so.
I'd try to keep it 30 minutes or less if you could. 28, 28. I appreciate it.
You could do it in between months.
Thank you. Ah, any further questions? Moving on. Ms. Ball?
Mayor, Commissioners.
Welcome back, first of all.
Thank you. Good to be back. Trying to play catch-up is a very hard thing to do when you're trying to stay on top of what's currently coming in and catch up on the back end of it, too. So I was glad Kate was able to step up and take care of things while I was gone. She's been a great member of the team. I really appreciate her. We're moving right along on Albertson's, as you've seen. We've got walls all over. We're starting interior work. We're working on sign permits for them. The traffic is, the traffic change is happening. I know we're still waiting on the crosswalk post. They are still not ready to be installed yet. I haven't heard anything new on those yet, so hopefully those are going to happen soon. We did do reviews, have been sent into the state for the windy. So that will be starting construction soon in that area, too. I did get a LGRF grant that was approved. It will be to reconstruct Fifth Street, well, to rehabilitate Fifth Street from Central to Jefferson, where it's, it's in really bad shape in that area. So, but I did get that grant. The grant was just shy of what we were going to need, but it wasn't, it wasn't, but. We were going to originally pay 46 in our, in our grant for our share. We're going to pay 46,478. With the shortfall of the grant that we got, we're going to end up paying 57,785. But the city manager said that was doable, so we could go ahead and get this project done and not have to cancel that grant. And my Jackson Street, of course, I'm closing that up, and we'll be getting some payback from that. Any questions?
Questions? I see. Thank you. Glad you're back.
Thank you.
Council?
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything new to talk about. May have a comment or two on one of the items on the agenda. Otherwise, I'd be happy to stand for questions if you have any.
All right, question? Hearing that. All right, we'll be moving on. Before we go to our public comment time, I would, we have individuals here from the Economic Development Department of the state and, of course, Evelyn from the city. Are you, I know, I had to look down to see if it's white over here, so. Are you going to be, have any discussion or anything you want to say at this point?
Not for me, thank you for that.
We'll do it. We'll be on the agenda later, Mayor Roberts, if you have questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. In addition, there's, there is a good contingent of the candidates for the positions of city commissioner here. I welcome everyone. If members of the audience don't know them, you might look around. There could be the people that you want to talk to. And whenever someone's campaigning, you always can get a little bit more of their ear at this time because, you know, that's what they're trying to do. So the incumbents up here, and there's some in the audience. So just want you to look around and look at some new faces. May see some of them up here in the near future. We will be for sure losing one that's up here, so. Anyway, moving on to our public comment time. It, now's the time, if you have something you'd like the commission to hear, please come to the podium. Please state your name, and then in three minutes or so, tell us what you'd like us to hear. Commissioner Gandy's not going to let it go long, so if you've got.
Three, we're done.
Well, no one jumped up, so we're going to assume that you're here for the later action. All right, bring us to our non-action items. Yeah, we're going to talk about pumpkin people.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Claire Hossel of Chamber of Commerce approached the city a few weeks ago. Apparently, their arrangement with the county has changed regarding the pumpkin people, and I just wanted to kind of bring the city commission up to speed about what Claire and the chamber would like to do this Halloween.
Mayor Roberts, Commissioners, the county is no longer endorsing the pumpkin people. They're going to have a fall festival on the grounds, so they don't even want to sort of display the pumpkin people there this year. We are going to put some at the chamber. We do, we are trying to encourage businesses to put them at their locations, but if they can't, we will want to see if there was a city-owned property that you guys would allow us to display the pumpkin people.
Just one or multiple?
Multiple ones is what we, I believe last year, we probably had about 10 different businesses or community leaders put theirs at the county, so. We didn't know if there was a location. We will have ours at the courthouse, I mean, not the courthouse, at our location. And the judges are actually doing one, too, so.
So theoretically, would be in front of the Denton Building, in front of City Hall, maybe at the library?
Basically where they've been in the past, pretty much.
They've been different locations. It's just the last couple of years, they really have put them at the county, and most of those were the county departments putting them up there, but we did have a few of ours up there, so.
I wouldn't put them out at the signs. That's just too tempting.
They need cameras. They're still doing these camera strips, so.
Just wanted to bring the commission up to speed. It changes the aesthetics of the city properties, so I want you to be aware of it.
Is there any...
Go ahead, Commissioner. As I mentioned in the last meeting when we brought this up, who's going to be responsible for takedown removal? The individuals that put them up?
Yes, we have that in the contract that they are to do that, and then we can also be called to go clean it up if they don't. But they were real good last year about making sure that they went off their displays down, because I think the county had maybe November first or something, that they wanted them all removed, and they were.
Basically, the city manager, I'm assuming that, I don't hear a lot of negatives, so you can proceed with the coming up with locations?
We are having our kickoff next Wednesday, October first, at the Good Samaritan. You are going to do it out there because we want to have our seniors, each senior, we're going to pumpkin to decorate. We're going to have the polenta bar out there and Squishy's food truck. They do the little, I say it wrong, the little fruits and vegetables, I don't want to, I can't say that for you. But it is all free to the public, so we will, if you guys would come out and support our kickoff. We will have pumpkins there and then we will also have a Denton Building. The county is this year giving us a thousand dollars, so we will be purchasing a thousand dollars worth of pumpkins. And then also the, I just went blank. They're giving the tickets to get the clothes and stuff, but is that what? The what? No. Hearts Desire.
Oh.
Hearts Desire, we give you a coupon, you can go down there and you can get anything from there for free to use for your pumpkin people also, so. Decorate, come up with your different things. We've had some really great things in the past.
Don't be naked, pumpkin please. Right? All right. All right. Brings us to our discussion of the Veterans Day Parade.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Ashawn Robinson wanted to give us an update on the proposed Veterans Day Parade for this year on November.
Good evening, everybody. Ashawn Robinson. So we are still looking at doing the parade on November eighth. I've talked to Dr. Christopher Ball about it. And I think, I think we'll have to get some discussion on it. I don't know if you guys have to vote on it or not, but we're looking at November eighth at four o'clock. We were talking about doing it at the fairgrounds down Central, down Main, but I think we're kind of, I was wondering if, you know, I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention and see if y'all felt like that. If that was okay with y'all, give it about a month before the parade, I can come back with you guys, we'll see how many people turned in applications for the parade. I think the fear is I have is, we're planning on maybe a small to medium-sized parade for Veterans Day, and to be a large one, we're shutting down commercial for twenty, thirty minutes, and that is a truck bypass, and that can be a lot of headaches in the state. So if we do have a lot of people, we might be able to change it back to the old Firders Building or even Tractor Supply downwards. So that's why we're kind of waiting, but I don't want to put a Tractor Supply in Firders when it's a small parade, we're shutting down Main for a long time, so. Other than that, that's where we're kind of at, where we're at about it. And I was coming to see if you've got any more suggestions on it.
How long is the permits?
So parade really is just, we need to get with Chief Police and Fire Chief and make sure we have personnel to shut down that many intersections is what we have to look at when we do a parade. It's, and we usually notify you guys of a parade, but it's not a resolution that has to be passed. So it is just, I have spoke with the chief and we do need to set up a meeting to make sure we're going to get this route exactly where he wants it and see if we have the personnel, because then we have to call in for sheriffs to come help with the lockage and things like that. So it's, it's a little bit of planning on our part that we got to take care of. And being that it's a new parade, new route, we're just having to look at those things. So we're going to meet with him again and fire marshal, Chief Police, Fire Chief, and Police Chief will be in that meeting, we'll get ourselves together.
As far as the, you have listed food vendors and music, where were you going to set that up?
We were looking at, for the first banner, it's going to be revealed, it's going to be right there on Jefferson and Main, so right by the Methodist Church. Awesome Chamber got ahold of the Methodist Church and they said that we can have the ceremony revealing in the parking lot. So that's where we'll have, I think we're trying to look at some companies that donate some lights, just in case it's a little darker, food trucks, music, stuff like that. We're even trying to get ahold of the high school, see if the high school can get some of their kids out there to play some music in the band and stuff like that. So it looks like it's going to be the parking lot of the Methodist Church right now. That's what it'll be.
Any questions?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that this happens with the parade being at four o'clock, more than likely it's going to be getting dark, so we definitely need to have lighting in the area. We don't want to have any issues or accidents or anything, so we want to make sure that this is lit up fairly good. As far as vendors, how many vendors you intend on having? You know, the parking lot's always so big, so you have to take that all into consideration. As far as, you know, when you know, like you said, you know more towards that day, size of the crowd that's going to be present. Is it going to be a small parade with not a lot of people, which would be fine, but if it's going to be really big, I would be worried about the area that we have, if there's going to be enough room.
Most of our parades end at Methodist Church.
Right, right, yeah.
So it's very common for them to end there, but that's where, that parking lot does get very busy with the end of a parade.
Yeah.
So if it's full of vendors and things, where is the traffic going to go at the end of the parade?
Yes.
So we spoke, the Chamber's speaking, we're working with the Chamber, the Chamber's going to help us, we're going to speak with the local banks and local businesses around there, so some of these floats, when they are done, if they do want to come celebrate, they got places to park. So, and then we're even considering when we get closer to that amount, seeing how many people put in, to even get with the roads and the city to see if maybe that other street on the other side of Jefferson, if we can maybe block that little, because I think there's two homes right there, even talk to them, it cones up, they can still get it out, but at least it's the foot traffic going in there. And we have lights going up, and I even think that, I think we're going to talk to the police department, see that bicycle lane right there, if we can have the lights there, so we're not peeing anything. We don't want no kids, that's my fear, is we have a great celebration and a kid runs in the street or something, so. The safety's there, we're getting some stuff, and we're getting some equipment donated to block some of this stuff off, so. And then the food vendors, like you said, sir, I think we're having, as of right now, it's not a hundred percent, we're looking at two food vendors and the food is trying to be proposed to be free to the public. They don't have to pay, so the public can come, they can go to one food truck, get a hamburger and chips, and then go to another one and get tacos and stuff, and it's going to be free. So that's what we're proposing for right now, so. But we're getting there, hopefully.
Just wondering, if we're going to close off any additional streets that are after the parade, that would be just like any other street event, and we would have to have a resolution to block those streets, so that's something we need to work on if we're going to get that planned, so we'll have time to get that resolution in.
All right.
More questions?
I hear none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, brings us to our update of city grants. Ms. Ball?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, as you know, the city's got a very robust grant program. We're one of the few cities our size that has a standalone grant administrator slash manager. I think the ROI is two to twenty to thirty times return on investment, so Leslie's here to give a quarterly update on the various grants that we have in process.
Yes, and I'll be quick, because Hamilton is at the theater tonight for free, so we can all get out and head over to the theater and get them. These are not in any particular order. Chaffaro Park Revitalization, that was an outdoor recreation trail plus ramp, really moving on quickly. We went out this weekend and there is electrical outlets being installed at the amphitheater and lights, so we can have some music and if there's any kind of concert or reunion, they'll have some lights in the evening, we'll have that loft, but they're working on that. It also is going to need some bird netting, so we're looking at some commercial bird netting and installation to not have the pigeons up and the raptors, and then we'll need a coat of polyurethane, but it's still living, and so they're still staff on that, so that probably, the amphitheater will be completed pretty quickly. The large structure is in construction, there's also going to be four to five fifty amp pillars going along Main Street, along the Main Avenue there, and then we're looking at the budget when those phases are complete, to see how much we have left, and we really want to focus on updating all the picnic tables out there at the middle picnic table, so people have plenty of time to sit and relax and have activities. The Veterans Memorial Project, city manager David Miranda has been updating the community on that, that is moving forward. We've not received the certified estimate of Phase Two and Three, we're expecting to get that any, any time now, but we're on pace to be under budget on that. Library improvements, the roof and plumbing. We're continuing with testing for tomorrow morning at seven AM, so I'll be over at the library with the crew that's coming in for the final test to ensure that we will have the roofing supplier develop a warranted roof structure system that, it's a very outdated roof. Once we get this done, we'll go out for RFPs. So that grant ends June twenty twenty-six, and we are slated to hit that deadline. Wastewater lift install, this is one that everyone is anxiously awaiting to come in. The holdup is the environmental department. I talked to them today and they have indicated they have multiple questions and they are going to try to meet on Wednesday. So that has to be approved by them before we can move into the construction phase of the lift install, and we're trying to push that as quickly as possible.
Upstate North upstream.
Yes, we've expressed urgency on that and we're still waiting for that. Police awning, police department awning. The contractor is working through his permitting process and he anticipates starting soon. Starting soon. And as I said on that, ADA sidewalks on Second Street, we received the certified cost estimates from the engineer, and they're coming in a lot higher than, than we had originally estimated when the CCG grant had started. We're going out exploring additional grant and funding opportunities and phasing that project. That's where we're at on that one. If there's any questions, just stop me. Wastewater treatment plant, emergency generator, the project is fully funded, the generator is expected to come in February twenty twenty-six. We're coordinating with the supplier to ensure that it's going to be a smooth transition for the emergency generator, and Robert Perez has plans to use the existing emergency backup generator as a mobile generator, which is really beneficial for the city. Animal shelter design improvements, that one is slated again for February twenty twenty-six, and I believe Laura Brock has updated you guys on that. IT and security networks for the municipal building has been successfully reauthorized. It's not a large of reauthorization there. We're gathering up all the municipal building needs, and we're going to sit and identify the most urgent needs and get that taken care of as quickly as possible. The wastewater treatment plant, critical upgrades, the EPA application was successfully submitted and approved. That was from the congressionally-directed funding that I believe Commissioner Wyke talked originally with our Congresswoman about. That was, we had rolled that over into the EPA application.
And that was nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand?
Nine, nine sixty, credit, nine sixty, successfully approved. We also got two hundred and forty in matching funds for that project. Capital outlay, we write, right now for that project, we have right about one point seven million. Still coming up a little short on that, and we are slated to submit for capital outlay FY twenty-seven to complete that project. Slated to submit to the governor's capital outlay, which comes around the first of December. And we also have successfully submitted an application to the Water Trust Board, so we're going to be traveling up to Santa Fe the first of October to present a five-minute presentation on our project and hope that we have, we get the additional funding that we need for that project, which is right at one point two five million. So our, the engineering firm is currently working on the engineering. ADA sidewalk improvements...
All in all, that's three million.
Three million. Three million is what we need. So we've got some different funding avenues that we're really aggressively trying to go after.
How short are you, point seven?
One point two five.
One two five.
We have one point seven, no, one point two five, one point three, five hundred and three, so. ADA sidewalk improvements and historic downtown is slated to start October sixteenth. The first phase of this project is going to be Avenue A on the south side. You'll start to see the construction right on that side of the Troy Harris Building between Main and Love Street. That should be completed. We gave them a hard deadline of June first. We have a meeting next week. I doubt it's going to take that long, but you never know. So it'll be started in the next couple of weeks. Keep the lights on, Lee Theater. This was four hundred thousand from New Mexico Main Street, Lovington Main Street's capital outlay. This is actually mistaken here, it was fifty thousand from the Lee County Commissioners' Discretionary Fund. They had a little residual capital outlay left over. That project is waiting on the last bit of paperwork and is slated to start any, any time. Raid grant, forty thousand for a trailer. This is going to be to help residents in the city take care of those large dump items that they need, so waiting on that, and we'll get a trailer over to the police department and the code enforcement to help them out. Keep Lovington Beautiful successfully received funding for this year to add more pet waste stations and trash receptacles in public areas across the city. Additionally, part of the grant is going to be used for stipends and to support youth groups with cleanup efforts. So if you know of any youth groups that are looking for a cleanup day, we have some money to support that group, so. Send them my way and we'll get them, get them going. Grants pending paperwork are the hydro evacuation truck, the judder and hydro trailer for the wastewater treatment plant, and the youth center improvements. They've been authorized, but we have not received final paperwork. Any questions so far? The Department of Grants, we want to congratulate Laura Brock for securing her two grants totaling sixty-one to forty-five eighty. Colby Van Cleve has secured his ongoing funding for the EMS, from the EMS Protective Fund and the Special Projects Fund for around a hundred and thirty. The firefight recruitment fund has been approved for extension for two additional years. The part, Detective Sergeant Teresa Grady, the Public Information Officer, on securing the two thousand and twenty-five New Mexico DPS Lieutenant Fred Beers Honor Guard for another year. Deputy Police Chief Christopher Layton. Securing ten thousand grant funds from game and fish for the fire, still in progress. Hopefully completed soon. We're good, we haven't, nothing is slated to, to end yet, so we're all in good shape on that. And then this is the exciting news, is that so far for this fiscal year, we have successfully submitted, have not heard approvals yet for disapproval. year, we have successfully submitted, have not heard approvals yet or disapprovals of 3,208,500. 3.2 million is what we've already put in requests for, for different projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-074, approved donation of ambulance to Lee County.
Yeah, a motion. Consideration of this resolution.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So one of the ambulances that we replaced with the van-style ambulances, we've got everything out of it that we need. And the county has actually shown interest. They would like it. They have an old, like, 90-something model ambulance from Hobbs Fire, and they would like to upgrade. So, you know, they donate a lot of stuff to us, and I would like to be able to help them out in there where they need it. It's a 2015. It's got 337,000 miles on it. I mean, we've dumped money in it left and right just to keep it running. So that's one reason we replaced it with the van-style ambulance. And like I said, I'd just like to help the county out where they need it.
Questions? All right. Hearing no further discussion. Shannon?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-075, Lodger's Tax Request for this year, 2026, second quarter.
Okay, motion in second quarter. Consideration of the lodger's tax.
We didn't give any money out.
One more time?
We didn't give any money out.
Okay, well, that's short. Way to go.
We changed it. We're gonna change it a little bit. We've got so many that come in all the time. We wanted to have them come in front of us in November and ask for what they need for the rest of the year. So we can kind of keep money in there for y'all. And we want to understand that it's for...
So we had a meeting for lodger's tax, and what happened was that traditionally, the lodger's tax policy was we approved events that happened in the coming up quarter. So we would meet, and then if they had an event coming up in the next quarter, we would approve for that funding and so on. And Claire with the chamber, she's got the 50th year of the lizard race coming up. And so she wanted to get funding during that quarter for an event that was happening in July. So, which she ended up withdrawing her application because lodger's tax felt that with the funding that was available, which was determined to be 80,000 left for the year, and to help the organizations, it said, we should have a work session where we received all the applications for the entire year, where they could send their request and we could allocate the funding for the third and fourth quarter and allow them time throughout the spring to really coordinate their events. So if the lizard race is the 50th year anniversary and she wants to do a six-month campaign, this will allow her to develop a advertising program that would be, have a successful lizard race. Also for Cinco de Mayo and Smokin' on the Plaza and any other event holders that wanted to look at a six-month campaign and really capture those visitors coming into the, the community.
I was just gonna ask that it was gonna be open to other organizations too, because you just can't open it to one. You have to open it basically to all.
That's probably what we're gonna get anybody that wants to, any of them. I'm trying to get out the other couple of those. It's done before. They haven't been on there. I'm gonna get out the county.
But they'll still be held in the same protocol that they'll have to have receipts and everything else could be, it'll be reimbursed. And so they're gonna have to, when they have events that are six months out, they're gonna have to manage their money pretty good to have it for when they need it.
Well, we'd like to coordinate with the finance department in allowing them to perhaps submit at the end of, end of the month with what they've actually used against that event. So they're not tied up, their funding's not tied up for six to seven months gathering their receipts. I think that was one of the things that was brought up is that, and I know because same thing with grants, you have to prove that you actually spent the money in a certain timeframe. And they were having issues with that. So we're, we're trying to make it easy on them, but then they have to develop their events a little stronger.
Any other questions?
One question. How, how do you continue to factor in what's already allocated for Chamber, Main Street, and EDC on their tally? I mean, we keep saying a, a total figure, but of that total figure, what is already allocated to the other three entities? I mean, allocated for something else? Or, or do already factor that in prior to them being?
Yeah, it's hard to factor in before we have maybe.
Okay.
It's allocated on a quarterly basis.
Okay, okay.
About the stipends?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure.
After the stipends, it's 80.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we can just vote. There wasn't any, anything to do. So Shannon, there was no allocation.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-076, approve Jackson Avenue for...
Motion taken for consideration of this approval.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, yeah, be on, take either one.
So basically, Jackson Avenue has an event for the last several years on October 31st. And we like to close the street off. That gives us some extra parking and because it slows down the traffic coming up Jackson. So they have to kind of work around this. Typically have one of the officers with sheriff's departments in that area that helps kind of keep the traffic down. Because then we think it's a wreck or something going on. So they slow down. We've had really good turnouts the last couple of years. I think D and whatever. So it's been a really fun event for us. And we've had games and different things like that. So we really appreciate the city taking the time and allowing us to close the street. So, you know, and the, the police department, the parks guys getting the street out, preparing for it at the proper times, probably around...
Last time it was on a Saturday, so we did do late hours. But we found out that people were wanting to trick or treat earlier. So we did go with the whole safer event. We used to have people just never know where to park, how to get across the road without getting hit. So it's made it a really safety bet.
And we kind of utilize the shopping center across the street.
Yep.
Some of their parking. And so it's, it's a lot of fun. We invite anyone, anyone from the community or anyone from the commission, you know, put on a mask, wear what you got, whatever.
You still get your mask on.
I wear it every day. It's happening all the time.
Oh, you can come park your truck down there, open the back up, and then bring candy with you.
Bring some candy. Come on, come on, bring some candy. It's close to your church, so call it close.
Yeah, there you go.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Shannon?
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-077, approve advertising for Organ 613 PDA for TD's Barbecue Project for New Mexico Economic Development FUDs for 150,000.
Right. We have a motion in second. Consideration. Heading up. Mr. Lucero.
All of us. You get us, get us all?
Get us all. All right, perfect.
I'm Lynn Holstein with Levington EDC. Also have Jim Lucero and Kevin Wilson. They are the regional reps for state economic development. So as I mentioned at the last commission meeting, we were gonna have an IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, PPA, Project Participation Agreement for TD's. We're to the final stages of it. So I would assume that we would advertise for the advertising at the next commission meeting, we would go for approval and then it's over, right? Just to kind of give him an idea because, and ask him when he can get started.
Is he here tonight?
No. He did not. So that's just something that we wanted to know as well. I mean, as I mentioned, this agreement is valid for five years. If he doesn't meet his metrics, then the state does have the ability to call back the money. You will get a wire transfer for the 150,000. And as they get the reports and they fulfill their metrics, then we'll do disbursements. Also, I have a question. It says 150,000. Are ordnance, does that include our 20,000 that we allocated for LDA?
No.
No, I thought that was separate. That was separate. Yeah.
So I understand. Oh, because the, the term sheet that's in this does show 170,000.
170, yeah.
Because we normally would combine the PPA with the two LDA agreements just for ease of documentation. So we wouldn't have to come before you too often just to combine those.
Counselor, can we?
I didn't draft that.
I know. All right. Well, we'll just have, I guess we'll have...
Amended.
Well...
Do we need to throw it out? Do we need to? Well, I think...
We have, we have an ordinance already that we voted on for 20,000.
It's, it's those ordinance already.
They're separate at this point.
Okay.
They're not gonna be a combination. It makes no sense at this point.
It's just advertising.
Just run like it is.
We can combine them when we do the final. It's just advertising.
I think you could just make a reference in here whether you wanted to make an adjustment to the, to that number.
A reference to that ordinance.
Just reference it in the motion. Because what would happen if somebody comes back two, three, four, five years later? They're gonna take a look at the minutes and, and see what it was. And so that, that would clarify.
Well, we've had it through, like the church and all that.
All right. Any further discussion?
So EDC is gonna hold the 150?
No, the city wants, it has to be in a separate account.
What, basically?
We are, we are, tonight, we're just approving advertising for the 150. So when we do the next final deal, we'll tie it all together.
Mayor, 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 and Commissioners, basically, due to the state anti-donation clause, we cannot directly give money to a business. So what we'll do is we'll put together a project, we'll put together two documents. One's an intergovernmental agreement, which will dictate the 150,000 that we provide to the city. The, the project participation agreement, the PPA outlines an agreement between you and TD's Barbecue, and that you will be the fiscal agent for that 150,000. And that will include metrics by which he can be reimbursed for it. And remember, these are reimbursements for things that he must accomplish that are in the PPA. Then, and they must be securitized. So if something happens, so if something happens to it, we can claw back based on the security. And the money can only be reimbursed for land building infrastructure. And the reason we reimburse for those is no matter what happens to the business, the asset remains liable.
And we'll be responsible to make sure that these metrics are made. That's our job.
EDC.
It'll be...
Well, it's a combination of both.
It will be a team effort. Mr. Dunnlap will have to let us know when he has reset metrics, and then we will evaluate. And as a team, we'll determine when it will be reimbursed.
Okay.
And he must give us, he must give us land building infrastructure invoices and for payment as well.
Correct. Okay.
And the plan is to begin construction once the, the land has been purchased. Once that happens, then he's gonna begin immediately. He asked, he actually asked if is there any way he could get keys so he can assess the property, measure the property prior. So whenever it does give proof, he's ready to go.
Okay.
And ahead, this will be put in an account of its own?
It's like an escrow account.
Yeah.
It's a separate GL account, wherever you want to hold that.
Yes.
We always ask, just don't put it in a journal fund.
Correct. We can, you do what we want to.
Tell Tara we'd love to see his face next time at his finalizing. Tell him I said. Tell him I said.
I will mention, yes.
Thank you, guys, for traveling over here.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions for us, concerns, comments?
I do have one comment. Commissioner Bolt had mentioned, you know, about shopping local and supporting local. And, you know, Bolt has also expanded existing building, businesses. And this is exactly what that does. And enables, this grant will enable an existing...
Two fairs ago at the Lee County Fair, that's where Westlake Ace Hardware, Roswell. So this is just local, locals around.
And that's why we're trying to help them out, plus other businesses, that we can keep things local or in business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, Commissioner Vogt, manufacture local.
I'm right.
Supported by Stop Local. You know, I was gonna say in between.
All right. Okay. Any further questions? All right. Shannon?
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-078, approve grant funding for Honor Guard Equipment and Trading for NM DPS Lieutenant Fred Beers Third Program.
Okay, motion taken for consideration of this resolution. Ms. Vogt?
Just a messenger.
Just a messenger, okay.
This is, this is the police department did a fantastic job fitting this, and this is the second year funding. So we do, I'm sorry, I'm very, I can't remember her title. Detective, Detective...
Detective Sardary.
Yes. She's the one that pursued this and brought it for underwriting.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, discussion? Hearing none. Shannon?
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2025-079, approve, approval of grant funding for Game and Fish OHV Trail Safety Grant Fund, pound sign, 2025 dash, 2026 dash 15.
Motion in second.
Messenger again. Yes, messenger again. I did read the, the grant agreement, and it looks like for doing some patrols over the weekends to just ensure the safety.
The 10 dollar grant to pursue off of, we'll get to the other city streets.
On Avenue H?
So...
Sorry.
But you guys, or Game and Fish is gonna help, or?
Uh, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna come in and do an operation with us. This doesn't pay for their salaries. It is paid for our...
Okay, that's what I was gonna...
Do you have to write a certain number of citations or warnings, just like DWI?
Not quarters and M, but it's, ours is two, two per hour.
Recommended?
Yeah.
No quarters?
No.
To H.
Okay, not Avenue H. In case we, you know, we live there, so they could be like, oh, we need that second one for this hour. And...
They can go to A.
Trust me, they can give me anything of the week.
When you make it a ticket, the vehicle, loud music, interior lighting.
Yes, see? I don't have any of that. I'm too old. It's too loud, I'm too old. I'm right there.
It's a scooter. It's a scooter.
And a trophy.
Any further questions? All right, Shannon?
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Commissioner Vogt?
Before I do that, can we share her page stuff to the Levington page more often?
Okay.
So that people can...
Grants or?
No.
Loris?
Loris?
Okay.
The animal page?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion taken. Discussion. Hearing none. Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boat?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Before I do that, can we share her page stuff to the Levington page more often?
Okay.
So that people.
Grants or?
No.
Loris?
Loris.
Okay.
The animal page?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
I have a motion and second, pay your bills.
Approved it in your city manager's report. I've seen that you stated that the senior center meals will basically double, correct?
We've seen a big increase in home delivery.
Okay.
And we've seen a fairly large increase in in-house. And I think that's some of the carryover from eliminating the ratten grill.
Okay. The question I had is that Great Western Dining Service, and I know that's from the senior center. We have two on there. One is for forty-one hundred and eighty-four dollars. And then we have another one, that's seventy-seven hundred, seventy-one. Is that just difference in a week, or is that the difference because it's gone up so much? So I'm asking, because you've got two separate entries in here.
And also, there's, uh, there's a, a late payment to Cisco Foods, because you might ask, why are we paying Cisco Foods?
And I've seen that also.
And we got Great Western Dining.
Right.
So I, I did ask Kristy that question on the double payment to them.
Uh huh.
Don't know, don't know the answer to that, but I do know the Cisco one is just the last, I think, payment to them before we.
Good, because I've seen the past couple of months, we're still paying Cisco. And I was wondering, are we still?
Well, the Great Western, believe, started July one, I think.
It was a little into August.
And I, I didn't know what the two payments were, if it was difference, we were splitting the bill, or how it was.
Look into it, and I can get back to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. And I just wanted to put out there that in looking at these accounts payable, you did a very good job, very good job of listing, itemizing.
Getting better detail.
A lot better. I appreciate it very much. Makes it a lot easier to look through in your calendar. So, thank you.
Well, I'll be sure to pass that on. Melissa and Kristy, they're going to work on the report. She works very hard to make sure that the report has plenty of detail.
Looks very good.
I appreciate it. And the department heads have also been trying to be more detailed in their, you know, listings, so.
Thank you, goes out to everyone then.
Sure, mind. So Tuesdays and Thursdays at the senior center, are we basing good numbers on that?
I need to get another different thing. I don't know.
Can we do that?
Initially, it was very good.
Yeah.
So I will get that.
You're good?
I'll have a, I'll present, I'll have a presentation, kind of an updated word, how it's going.
How much has been? How a month has gone?
Yes.
How a month of mess has gone? How a month has gone?
Shannon. I believe it's your turn.
Commissioner Boat?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes. Yes.
If that, the items of the agenda are exhausted, we urge you. Thank you all for coming.
I tried.
Dude.
I'm within five minutes.
You think you're good? Good job.